The March 13 meeting of the Williamsburg City Council will come to order. Ms. Judkins, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson?
Here.
Mr. Pond?
Here.
Mayor Hallman. Vice Mayor Freiling?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
And as referenced at Monday's meeting, Mayor Hallman is out of town this week and will be back in town on about the 17th or 18th, so he won't be with us today. First on the agenda today, we have the council minutes from the February 13, 2014 meeting. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Mr. Freiling, I'll move that the minutes be approved as mailed.
Second.
Ms. Judkins, call the roll, please.
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Pond?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
This brings us to our matters of special privilege, and today we have the presentation of the National Softball Association Kiwanis Park 2013 Outstanding Park Award to NSA Youth Fast Pitch State Director Frank Rehubka.
First of all, thank you for inviting me to present this. For those of you that may know, the National Softball Association, we've been operating girls softball tournaments here in the local area for the last 12, 13 years. And Quarter Path Park and the old Kiwanis Park and now the new Kiwanis Park has always been an integral part of our success within the state of Virginia. We are, there are three national associations that run these tournaments, us being one of the three. We're the largest in the state of Virginia. Last year, we were able to host the World Series here for the Class B Eastern Seaboard, and as many of you know probably through the publicity, we had 142 teams. We had teams from Miami, Michigan, a whole bunch of states. Because of that success and the great support that we had from the community and from local businesses and corporate folks here in the area, NSA did something not unprecedented but very rare, that we come back to the same community in consecutive years. That being said, we offered the option to Williamsburg in the historic triangle, and without hesitation, they jumped on it, and so we're coming back next year. We've already got to date over 50 teams signed up, so we expect to break that number. And as I was telling Lori Rierson today, we've got four teams actually coming down from Canada this year, so we're going to have a true World Series here in Williamsburg. If you've ever been out to Kiwanis and watched these girls play, you'll see some great talent out there. If not, I invite you to be out there. First ones, April 5th and 6th, we'll have 50 teams in town that year. The economic impact's been great, and I really want to thank the council and the leadership of this city for embracing sports, not just softball. But I can tell you, 12, 13 years ago, it was hard to get the time of day in this area when it came to sports. But the economic realities of everything were really a blessing for sports industry and also for communities to understand the economic impact of sports and what it can do for the community in that respect, hotels, restaurants, gas, whatever it may be. So I appreciate all of that support and look forward to continued success. In closing, we at the national convention that we have every year recognize about 25 parks on an annual basis as outstanding parks. And I wouldn't even begin to venture to think how many parks there are throughout the continental United States, but it's a heck of a lot more than 25, I can assure you. So to be one of those and to be recognized, I think, is a great honor and a testament to the Parks and Recs Department, led by Lori and Mr. Tuttle, city manager, and the council for the support that you give to the program. So that being said, the National Softball Association's 2013 Outstanding Park, Kiwanis Park, Williamsburg, Virginia, we want to thank you for the support and contribution to the success of NSA, and this is by Hugh Cantrell, the CEO in the NSA National Office. So, Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to present.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If anybody would like to say anything. And, Mr. Rehubka, you were very kind to thank council and the entire city for embracing sports through sports marketing efforts. We want to thank you for accepting that embrace, because over the past 14 years, you've been instrumental in bringing softball teams here to Williamsburg. And at last year's World Series event, there were 144 teams that came to this area for that week-long event. And you're absolutely right about the economic impact of that. It's something we are working to do an even better job at promoting and providing the right kinds of experiences and services for the people who come, but we don't lose sight of the people who've been here before and have helped us get to where we are. We really want to express our appreciation to you and all the efforts you've put forward to help get us in this position, and thank you very much for this award.
Okay, quite well. Thank you.
And thank you for bringing back in 2014.
Look forward to seeing you '15.
I also have another matter of special privilege that's not on the agenda. I would like to acknowledge that Reed Nester was the recipient of one of three United Way 2013 Coordinator of the Year awards presented this week. Mr. Nester and his team comprised of the planning staff, zoning, and codes compliance department coordinated the city's 2013 United Way campaign, which reached its goal of $16,000. I'm told that as a reward for his good efforts, in addition to receiving this beautiful plaque, Mr. Nester will also receive the privilege of coordinating the 2014 campaign.
If he's appropriate.
Okay, this brings us to our public hearings, which we have three today. Will we be doing separate presentations on each?
Will we do them all together?
You want to do the two schools together? I can do them together.
We can do the two schools together. Why don't we do the two school presentations together, and then we'll take care of them
separately. The first is PCR-14-001, the request of WJCC Public Schools for a special use permit for Berkeley Middle School new classroom trailer and a time extension for two existing classroom trailers. And PCR-14-002, request of WJCC Public Schools for a special use permit for Matthew Whaley classroom trailer.
It's hard to follow that United Way.
As you mentioned, Mayor Freiling, Vice Mayor Freiling, Williamsburg Jane City County Public
Schools is requesting a special use permit for one U double-wide classroom trailer and a time extension for two existing classroom trailers at Berkeley Middle School until July 2018. The applicant notes an anticipated enrollment at Berkeley next year of 942 students, some 113 over capacity. Current enrollment is a 901, and the two existing trailers house the additional 72 students. And the trailers are located here, where the red star is shown. This property is designated as public and semi-public land use in the 2013 comp plan, which includes government facilities, churches, public and private schools, nursing homes, and cemeteries. The property is owned, single-family RS2, which allows public or private schools, colleges, and universities, including temporary classroom facilities with a special use permit. Site plans for temporary classroom trailers were approved by Planning Commission in 1988, 1989, 1990, and 1991. These approvals were made under the old zoning ordinance, which did not require a special use permit. Since 1991, City Council has approved special use permit for classroom trailers in '95, 2004, 2005, and 2009 for the two trailers, and 2011 for two trailers. The approval for the two trailers in 2011 expires in July 31, 2017, and the applicant has requested an extension of their removal until July 2018. This site is not located in an architectural preservation district, so no ARB approval was required. Planning Commission held a public hearing in February. No one spoke on the request, and Planning Commission recommended by a vote of 7-0 that City Council approve the special use permit for one U classroom trailer and the time extension for the two existing classroom trailers. For PCR-14, this is, again, the existing two classroom trailers, and the red is the new one. For PCR-1402, the schools are requesting a special use permit for a double-wide classroom trailer at Matthew Whaley School, beginning in July 2014 and expiring July 2018. The applicant notes that the current enrollment at Matthew Whaley is 532, which is 60 students over the September 2012 enrollment of 472. They anticipate this trend to continue, gaining about 20 students a year. This property is located in the downtown planning area of the 2013 comp plan and is designated as public and semi-public, which includes public and private schools. It is located in the single-family residential district, RS3, which allows public and private schools, colleges, and universities, including temporary classroom facilities with a special use permit. A special use permit for one temporary classroom trailer was approved at Matthew Whaley School in 2006 with a one-year time limit. Prior to 2006, a site plan for three temporary classroom trailers were approved by Planning Commission. The Architectural Review Board approved the design of the proposed classroom trailer. This is the location here in Rid, where the proposed trailer is to be located. It is located in about the same location as it was previously, and this is what the trailer would look like. The Architectural Review Board approved the design of proposed classroom trailer on January 14. Planning Commission again held a public hearing in February. No one spoke on the request, and Planning Commission recommended by a vote of 7-0 that City Council approved this requested special use permit. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Alan Robinson with the School Division and Bruce Abbott with AES are both present if you have any questions in there.
Does council have any questions for Ms. Murphy? Okay.
I do have questions for this school.
Oh, sure.
Go ahead, Scotty.
Do you want to do this before the public hearing?
Oh, no. Let's do the public hearing first. I'm sorry, got out of process there.
If anybody would like to speak to this matter, please come forward. Offer your name and address. Seeing none, close the public hearing and come back to council. Mr. Foster?
Let's talk about, are these trailers intended to be a permanent fix? Is this temporary elasticity flow? What's the timetable here?
No, they're definitely not a long-term fix. It's kind of given us a little bit of leeway so that we can look for a really good solution that would be long-term, especially Matthew Whaley. 2018's a timeline that we've kind of set up as to find that solution.
Got you. What other middle schools are getting trailers?
At this point in time, none.
Right. You know, and here's my issue. Berkeley's already over capacity, and I'm sorry I don't have the enrollment sheets at the other middle schools, but I saw them the other day, and it strikes me that they're not over capacity as much as Berkeley. And right now, with Berkeley having five cycles of lunch, I believe it is, what are these new students, what's the real impact beyond a trailer? A trailer in the back, I don't really have a problem with. I see that as an appropriate expansion. So I guess I'm in discussion. I'm not asking a question yet. So no other middle school's getting a trailer. Do you have any idea what the impact of these additional students will have on the schedule of lunches?
Well, a couple factors with that. The trailers are as much to take care of the enrollment that's there as it is for some of the expected enrollment, because you're correct that they are over the capacity of the main building. One of the things that has been discussed and is in the planning stages, no contract has been awarded for construction, but we have considered expanding the cafeteria seating slightly, just to give us, so that we can reduce the number of classroom, you know, the lunch periods, because we recognize that that is an issue. And of course, all geared towards 2018 with a solution and a possible additional middle school.
Sure. Has there been any, and I know redistricting is a tough conversation to have, but I know in the past, I think we've talked about at least some spot redistricting. Thank you. Any consideration of doing that versus trying to deal with the impact of more students in Berkeley?
I can't give you a definitive answer, but I can say that that's, you know, one of several things that are being considered. The superintendent of the school were looking at a number of alternatives, specifically, you know, with Matthew Whaley. I think Berkeley, the biggest one that is being considered is, of course, the new middle school and trying to get that underway.
Yeah, it looks like they're all over. Thanks for getting that forward, Jay. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
I just wanted to comment that this is why we need a fourth middle school. It really is.
Thank you, sir. And to Mr. Pond's point, and folks watching at home may not understand what you meant by the number of lunch cycles. I know my student at Berkeley has lunch at 10:30, and I don't think that's the first shift going into the cafeteria for lunch. So it's because of the limited capacity of the infrastructure that the more students places a greater burden on the scheduling. More conversation on this?
Well, you know, I think I would like to find another solution for the impact of these additional students that are going into Berkeley. I just think we're too close, too far over capacity from, and I have a student there as well, and I think she goes to lunch early, and it's disruptive, and I don't think it's a healthy environment. And so my concern really is with the number of students that are slated to go into this school, and I wonder if there isn't another solution to deal with the population at that school rather than having, providing more classroom space, because it's, the problem goes beyond the classroom. I mean, there's, as was pointed out in the joint meeting Tuesday, those hallways are very narrow, and if you've ever been there on parent-teacher day, you know, it's hard to navigate through there because it's just so crowded. And so I just, I think we're only going to exacerbate the problem of the lunch, of the crowded hallways, and, you know, I don't even know what the impact is from a fire safety standpoint. So that's what's on my mind.
And may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
The spot redistricting, which is what would be necessary in the interim before there's a solution with another middle school option determined, and then the year-plus that it would take, or two-year-plus it would take to accomplish that, I mean, that's really our only alternative. That's a really difficult thing to do, and I'm not saying it's not something the school system should consider, but for the purposes of our discussion today, the one trailer's really to handle the students who are currently there at the school. And if, I think it's something that we should approve, but I think the alternative might be through the school liaison committee to talk to our colleagues in the schools and ask them what their thinking is on the needs between this point where we are and whatever time it will take to get that fourth middle school built. And I might, I'm not sure the problem at Matthew Whaley isn't worse than it is at Berkeley.
Right, and I don't have firsthand experience there, and so that's an interesting point.
Do we have any information on the downside of being taught in a trailer that's separate from the rest of the school? I mean, do we know if there's any significant drawbacks to that? Because, I mean, yes, 2018 is the new construction date, but that's still four years of...
That's a fair question. I think I can speak to that from a couple different angles, having had a student who went through Lafayette when she was in trailers, and several other teachers, good friends of mine who've known. I think as a teaching environment, I think it's fine. I think the disadvantages are, of course, you know, the weather, you're having to go in and out. I think truthfully, in the long haul, the greatest disadvantages are from a maintenance standpoint. But I think in terms of a learning environment itself, you know, the teachers and the students would tell you that, you know, it works fine.
Got you. That's reassuring. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I misspoke earlier. Berkeley is the only middle school that's over its effective capacity, so the other schools still have some capacity to be achieved. And again, I'm not an expert at middle school education, or transportation, or redistricting. It just seems to me that there's got to be another solution. So that would be my, so I'm not going to support it.
Ms. Newtonson, anything to add? Well, and I respect that perspective and opinion. I will support it because I want to do what I can to help the students who are in that school now, and if we don't provide the extra classroom space, that means that either some class won't be offered or taught because there's no space to hold it, or there will be crowding within classrooms that would be undesirable because there won't be a place to hold a separate session of a particular class. And I don't think that either of those is an alternative I would like to put on the students at the school now. I agree, in my mind, your point about the additional capacity or the additional student enrollment putting greater pressure on the overall school experience, to me, is more of an issue than whether or not we have some students in a particular trailer. I've had students who've gone to class in trailers, or children who've gone to class in trailers, and it's not ideal when they have to go the extra distance. It takes a little longer, it's less convenient, the weather's an issue, but the experience within the trailers is not necessarily detrimental. I'm not sure what the teacher always thinks about being assigned to have his or her class in the trailer, but, yes.
Well, and I anticipate this will pass, but I think it's important that, at least, I send the message that I'm not sure that we've explored all the options. At least, those other options that were considered have not been presented to us, and so, I just want to be clear that I'm sending that message, and I'll do that with a no vote.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor, I'll move the approval of PCR-14-001.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Judkins?
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Pond?
No.
Vice Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
We also have the next item on the Matthew Whaley trailer.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'll move the approval of PCR-14-002.
Second.
Ms. Judkins, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Pond?
No.
Vice Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passes. This brings us to PCR-14-006, Public Hearing on Revisions to Museum and Art Gallery Uses in B2 and B3 Districts, Proposed Ordinance 14-09. Mr. Nester?
Because of some recent inquiries that we've received regarding museum uses along the city's entrance corridors, we feel that the use regulations in the B2 corridor commercial district and the B3 urban commercial district should be changed to require additional review for museums and art galleries with outdoor display. Because large lots exist in these districts and because the importance the comprehensive plan places on preserving the character of the entrance corridors, we feel that the extra review that we would have by making museums and art galleries with outdoor display a special use permit use will help in the review of any applications we might receive in the future. Special use permit review, of course, requires hearings by Planning Commission and City Council and a final decision by council, and this would just apply to the B2 and B3 districts. Planning Commission had its public hearing on February 19 and recommended to council that this change be approved by a four-to-three vote, and to implement the commission's recommendation, council would need to adopt Proposed Ordinance 14-09, which makes museums and art galleries with outdoor display a special use permit use in B2 and B3 districts.
Questions for Mr. Nester?
Just real quick, remind me, I believe it's not the case, but we're not talking about the Arts District. That's not in the B2.
No, the Arts District is in the LB2 District.
Thank you. Can you ballpark the fees associated with having to file for a special use permit?
Special use permit fee is $800 plus $50 an acre.
$50 an acre?
Yes.
Mr. Nester, if a non-museum business in this district chose to start enhancing the exterior with art in the front so that it was visible from the street, tell us which guidelines would...
That would go before the Architectural Review Board and be subject to the Architectural Review Board's design review guidelines.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nester. If anybody would like to speak to this public hearing, please come forward. Not a big rush to the podium today. With that, it will close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion, comment, and a vote. Mr. Foster?
You know, I'm not necessarily opposed with it, just a thought that I have, you know, kind of runs afoul of, I think, our efforts to create a creative economy, bringing in artists and artisans who may want to display something, you know, in front of their store. You know, and how permanent is it? And so, but I think in general, I think this is a sound ordinance change.
May I just, that's why I asked the question about the business that wanted to put art out front. If we had, and again, this does not apply to the Arts District, but if we had somebody who wanted to open, I guess there's a difference between a museum and somebody who's an artist with a studio and gallery, or gallery, attached to their workshop. And in the latter case, it's somebody who's, in a sense, advertising what they're doing there in a way that promotes their business. And it's going to be somewhat transient, and I think that's appropriate that that's covered by the Architectural Review Board. I guess the difference with the museum is that you've got a more permanent presence that, it's not about so much conducting the business as it is a totally new type of business that's coming into an area. And I guess the special use permit is the way we have of determining, of having that safeguard in there to make sure that there's, not to say that somebody can't do something, but it's to give the public the opportunity to weigh in and have some input as to whether they believe that's the right thing for that particular area of the city, because without that, they really don't have any choice. So, Ms. Newtonson?
I agree with that. I think that's the reason to do this.
Do you have a motion?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'll move the approval of Proposed Ordinance 14-09.
Second.
Ms. Judkins, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Pond?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passes. This brings us to reports, monthly financial statement. Mr. Tuttle?
Just one thing to point out, on page five, the sales tax results now show, for February, show that the performance, or rather, the activity month was in December, and actually, we had a pretty good December in sales tax, first, the best we have had in many years, and an 8.6 percent increase over the prior year. The same month, looking back at your tables above that for room tax and meal tax, show that December was relatively flat in both room and sales from the prior year, but sales tax revenues were much higher. So we hope that's a sign of good things to come in terms of building up the holiday season for business activity in the city.
And in the past, I seem to recall that not only do we have a lag time in the recording of sales tax, but sometimes there are anomalies that need to be corrected later on. Are we pretty confident that this number is good?
I have no reason to believe it's not an accurate reflection of the activity that was placed in that month and not a result of shifting from one month to another to correct problems in the past. Things have settled out pretty well in sales tax, and we're pretty confident now that the numbers we get each month are accurately reflect the activity that month.
Well, let's just hope January and February follow suit, although with the weather, that might be a bit of a challenge.
Right.
But if you follow Mr. Tuttle's comments about how it, you know, the room and meals were relatively flat, but yet we had a good sales, if you look at January's room and meals, which are down, one would anticipate that the sales tax will not be as strong.
As strong. Yeah, I agree.
Anything else for Mr. Tuttle? Monthly departmental operating reports?
Well, I thought I just mentioned one thing. We tracked hundreds of metrics every month, and you see those in these reports. One of them that we look at is the percentage of sick leave taken of total hours that are available to work, and currently, we're showing year-to-date a 2.5 percent of total hours being taken to sick leave. If you took the amount of sick leave that employees are entitled to, it would come out to 4.6 percent of total time. So we've set as a target, seeing that reduced from, it was up in the threes, above three in the last few years. Last year, it was down at 2.83, you can see on the report. Last year, it was down at 2.83, you can see on the report. And so we're continuing to trend down. That's a good thing for many reasons. It indicates that we're healthier as a workforce. It indicates that employees are being careful to guard their sick leave and build it up for the time should they have a catastrophic illness. And it also just is a good indicator of the workplace culture, that less people are using sick leave when they shouldn't. So it's good to see that metric moving in that direction, and something that perhaps we could even move our target a little lower now that we've met it.
People must love you as a boss. Good job. Now we're going to really raise that bar. Anything else for Mr. Tuttle?
I just wanted to mention that it says in the report that IT and the staff has figured out a way to broadcast our meetings from the third floor of the municipal building, which I think is really nice. I think that's, it's good for the public to have us live, so to speak.
And thank you for mentioning that, because I believe this is our last meeting?
It is.
In the existing Striker Building?
Yeah. We need some kind of ceremony, right?
We'll have a, later on.
Yeah, right. Anyway, I'm very impressed and pleased that we're going to be able to broadcast those meetings. So, thank you.
Okay, this takes us to city manager reports, the 2014 Asphalt Overlay Award of Bid.
Mr. Clayton, can you give this report?
Vice Mayor, City Council. As we do each year, we are bringing to you this year the bids for our annual asphalt paving work. The project was formally advertised and was bid on February 19th. And if you notice, this is our first year that we've had a third bidder. Normally, Branscombe Inc. and Basic Construction are the only two bidders, but Lehigh Construction has built a plant up in New Kent, so we're probably going to start getting three bids a year. So that's good, that's good news. The bids range from approximately $406,000 to $481,000. The list of streets is shown in your memo there. As you can tell, we're concentrating our efforts in the downtown area as a complement to the reconstruction work that's taking place now on Prince George and Armstead. Namely, we're paving Prince George, Armstead, the remainder of those streets, Scotland Street and North Boundary Streets. The low bidder is Branscombe Inc. at $405,709.60. They would start their work, if you folks approve this, start their work in May and be completed by July. So that's all I have to report, so we're looking forward to your approval.
Questions?
Mr. Clayton, if you would, just remind us in the public how it is that particular streets are determined, you know, when they fall into cycle and in the process that you go through to make that determination.
Well, we have a record-keeping system where we know when the last streets were last paved. We also do an annual inspection of all the streets, and we base it on that. Fortunately, we're small enough that we can do a lot of that kind of work and do a good job.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Clayton, would you mind just giving us an update on the timeline for the opening of the street and repaving along Prince George Street that's currently closed?
Well, what caused was the weather. We probably would have been about done by now, but the weather's really wreaked havoc there. So I'm thinking right now, we're, the sidewalk work's done for the most part. We're cutting the street out now, the asphalt's been removed, we're down to the sub-bass. Next week, we're planning on, actually starting tomorrow, starting on putting stone in. We've put in eight inches of stone, three inches of base asphalt, and two inches of the top asphalt. So the stone will start tomorrow. There's a possibility we could be paving as early as next Friday, so. But after that, we've got to come back and do one little section there in front of the construction that's happening at the, Mr. Granger's building, because he's blocked a part of the sidewalk. But we're in pretty good shape. Armstead Avenue's done for the most part. That'll all be repaved as well, with repaving Prince George, that block, Prince George, and also Armstead Avenue. So I would say, you know, every time we've said something, we've been wrong.
Sure.
Because of the weather, but I would say by the end of this month, we hope to have the road open.
And then that would be without a finish coat that would come later?
No, we would go ahead and put the finish coat on. Yes, sir.
Great.
Ms. Freyling, I just want to say for the record, I do live on College Terrace, but the fact that I've lived there won't impede my ability to make a fair decision.
Oh, I'm sure it won't. Mr. Pons, do you have a motion?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'll move that council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Branscombe Incorporated for the 2014 asphalt overlay schedule in the amount of
Second.
Ms. Judkins, we have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Clayton. This takes us to the city attorney report.
Nothing today.
We're very sad. Unfinished business? No? New business? I hope that we can reflect in the minutes to Mayor Holman that this meeting took about six hours. He's just going to be too jealous. This takes us to open forum. I have one speaker's card, and it's for Gary Shelley. Mr. Shelley, if you're kind enough to come forward and for the record, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Gary Shelley. I live at 205 Indian Springs. I came here today to speak once again about the scandal at 110 Harrison Avenue. But before I do, I'd like to touch upon particularly a couple of things Mr. Pons and Mr. Freyling said about having students at Berkeley. I too have a student there this time, and next year at this time, I'll have three students there. My student now has lunch at 10 o'clock in the morning, and this is not a good situation, as Mr. Pons said. I think there's just got to be a better way to handle this. Certainly, my family's not the only one concerned about the hour that eats so early. And I know it's difficult, but I just wanted to pass it on to you that it certainly is not a healthy thing that we feel in our family. I hesitate to speak today because I came with the assumption that Mayor Holman would be here, and I would be speaking before him. And of course, as you all know, I've spoken many, many times in the past about the situation at 110 Harrison Avenue, his involvement with it. And of course, many times, I've spoken about how he has dishonored the position with his actions there. I hesitate to speak because it's possible to be perceived that somehow this is cowardly to come here without him being here to, in a face-to-face situation. Nevertheless, we've done this many, many times, and he has yet to respond. And seeing that I won't be talking behind his back, that he can see everything I said on video later, I'll go ahead and proceed with what I had to say. Last time, when I spoke last month in open forum, one of the supporters, Mr. John Whitley, followed my appearance here, and he expressed that he was incensed by, and I quote, "the absurdities, the comments, and the accusations," unquote, that I have made. And I want to assure the Williamsburg public that I do not come to these meetings unprepared. All the comments I make are well-researched and well-documented. The comments I present are based on minutes of these meetings, minutes of work sessions, minutes of retreats and agendas. Also, I watch and I re-watch the videos to make sure I've missed nothing. I've also documented evidence that I have received from FOIA requests. I have spoken with a number of city officials to make sure that my facts are in order. I have read and collected newspaper accounts of what took place there, accounts from Virginia Gazette, Virginian Informer, The Flat Hat, Daily Press. Mr. Whitley is to be commended for his continued interest and reliable attendance at these meetings, although he's not here today. One thing for sure that we all agree on is that it's in the sanctity of the process of how we govern ourselves. We demand transparency, we demand honesty, and we demand accountability. The mayor has subverted that process. My responsibility as a vigilant citizen is to bring the wrongdoing that the mayor did to the public's attention. If my accusations are without merit, I can easily be discredited. The mayor has access to the same materials that I do and more. He has at his disposal the city manager, the city attorney, he has the clerk of council. He also has the vice-mayor, who normally sits next to him, who was at the meeting at the time when the property was purchased. The vice mayor would be able to lend support if only he could. Mr. Freyling has been a conspicuously silent also over the years. Last month, another citizen spoke in front of you in open forum. He had a concern about how, about a party that had taken place in his neighborhood. This party was hosted by students, and it took place last homecoming. At the conclusion of his appearance, the mayor assured him that the police chief would be looking into the matter, that he would pass on, that he would notify the Neighborhood Relations Committee about what took place, and he assured the gentleman that he would get back with him. I have made many appearances before this council regarding the scandal, and no one has ever gotten back to me or given me assurances. The mayor continuously and conspicuously hides in silence. Last month, I also asked the city to provide a report about the transaction, which, if the mayor is not guilty of anything, it would exonerate him. It would put to rest any further accusations I could possibly make. That the mayor governs with double standards is no secret to anybody, at least not to students at the college, that he would treat the gentleman who came here last week with assurances that he would get right back to him, and there would be action from our city on the one hand, and to someone like me, or in the case of some students who've come before him in the past, give us a little regard. This is nothing new. This is no surprise to any of us. Mr. Whitley, too, could in my appearances, if he could find records that prove that the mayor did not subvert the process. And I invite him to share his evidence with me privately or publicly if he so chooses, if he would like to research it. If he is unable to uncover any evidence of the mayor's innocence, I would expect that Mr. Whitley would report to such at next month's meeting. I'll say this about myself, I have the strength of character to admit if I've been wrong. Prove me wrong, and I'll stand up here next month, and I'll admit it. Barring that, this vigilant citizen will continue to give voice to the many who are offended by the mayor's part in the scandal and to his position as mayor of our town. That was to conclude what I had to say here today, except I'd like to add one other thing. And Mr. Vice Mayor, as I recall from one of the meetings here, you remarked how important communication is between the council and the citizenry. And if I remember your words correctly, you said it's a two-way street. Certainly, I have brought forth these concerns on many occasions. We're still waiting to hear from you. Thank you very much.
And for that, we thank you, Mr. Shelley. Would anybody else like to address, council? Seeing no one? Brings us to the end of our business for today. We have no closed session scheduled.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in two seconds. Ms. Judkins, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
We are adjourned.